The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
I'd like to call this board meeting to order. We'll start with roll call. Beth, if you could help us out with that?
Thank you. Becker?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Shelton?
Here.
Sit Nakow?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Vanden Hoewel?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
All right, all seven board members are present. I'd like to entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I can do that. I move that the board convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, more specifically to potential property acquisition. And pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations, to wit staff investigations. The board will reconvene in open session at six o'clock PM pursuant to section 19.852 Wisconsin statute to consider the balance of the special board meeting agenda. The board may convene in closed session after the conclusion of the work session meetings for such reasons noted in this posting in pursuant to a proper motion. The board may return to open session to vote on items discussed in closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Beth?
Smith?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Vanden Hoewel?
Hi.
Sit Nakow?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Shelton?
Hi.
All right, past seven zero, we will head over to closed session.
Looking good.
All right, thank you, Josh. Looking for a motion to reconvene into open session?
I move that the board reconvene in open session pursuant to section 19.852 Wisconsin statute to consider the balance of the special board meeting agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Beth?
McCoy? Laura McCoy?
You?
Hi.
Thank you. Shelton?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Sit Nakow?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Vanden Hoewel?
Hi. All right, past seven zero. We took roll call at five o'clock before we went into closed session. All seven board members were present. We'd just like to recognize that we're also joined by Dr. Michelle Langenfeld along with members of her cabinet from the inner city student council. We have Luke Pizzani and Becca Delvo joining us. And then we have a few other guests who will be giving us a presentation a little while later. So kicking off the special board meeting, we'll start off with benefit days. Michelle, are you taking that?
Actually, this will come from Pete Ross and Terry Williams and Melissa, but Pete leads on this one.
Wonderful. All right, Pete?
All right, the document that you have in front of you is a document that we've worked with administratively in order to provide the opportunity for us to continue services to the school district as we normally would. People without the COVID crisis would have taken some vacation and had the ability to take vacation. During the month of June, there are some essential things that need to happen. For a few individuals that weren't not able to get the vacation in, we really need to have those individuals June rather than taking the entire month of June as their vacation as the only opportunity for them to take that vacation. So administratively, we discuss a blended way out of that situation. By far, the vast majority of our employees are not in this situation. It's a handful of employees, so a pretty small percentage that would be receiving some payment for the vacation and have the ability to roll some additional vacation into the next school year. And we thought that blended approach would be the least impactful way to proceed, allowing people to have credit for the vacation that they earned for the year. And so that proposal is what you have in front of you, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Anyone have any questions for Pete?
Hello? Am I still there?
Yeah, you're there, Pete. I don't think anyone has.
Well, I'm having some issue with my Zoom launch, so sorry.
You're okay.
I can't see you all right now, but I'm glad you can still hear me.
All right, if no one has any questions for Pete, then I'll look for a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Beth? Beth, you're on mute.
Thank you. Becker?
Hi.
Sit Nakow?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Vanden Hoewel?
Hi.
Shelton?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
All right, passed seven zero. Thanks, Pete, and the team for putting that together. The next several things on the agenda are approval of hires. Christina, do you want to read those motions for us?
Sure. Okay, just pull it up. The first one, I move that the employment of Chad Gensema, is it Gensema? Of transportation manager, 12 months at the district office building at a salary of $77,501, group 12 contingent upon pre-employment requirements as presented be approved.
Second.
Beth?
Warren?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Sit Nakow?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Shelton?
Hi.
And Vanden Hoewel?
Hi.
Thank you.
And as a point of clarification, it's Chad Gensema.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Chad has a very important job in our school district, so we're glad that he's here.
I'm afraid he's going to get thrown right into the fire here.
Yeah, there's no, there's no soft onboarding for Chad.
No, trying to figure out, you know, how we're going to go forward in the fall. Had a lot of experience from other large districts, so he'll be a good asset for us.
Great. All right, employment of staff, next on the agenda.
Do you want me to just keep going, Eric?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Sure. I move that the employment of staff as presented be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Brenda. Beth?
Shelton?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Vanden Hoewel?
Hi.
Sit Nakow?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
And Becker?
Hi.
Past seven zero. You have the transfer.
All right, next, I moved that, yep, sorry, I moved that the transfer Jennifer Sykes, principal 11 months at Jackson Elementary School at a salary of $101,997, group eight, to principal 11 months at Webster Elementary School with no change in salary effective July 1, 2020 as presented be approved.
Second.
Beth?
McCoy?
Hi.
Vanden Hoewel?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Sit Nakow?
Hi.
And Shelton?
Hi.
All right, also passed seven zero.
I move that the transfer of Kate Dolan, principal 11 months at Jefferson Elementary School at a salary of $99,958, group eight, to principal 11 months at Jackson Elementary School with no change in salary effective July 1, 2020 as presented be approved.
I'll second.
Right, Beth?
Sit Nakow?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Vanden Hoewel?
Hi.
Shelton?
Hi.
And Becker?
Hi.
Past seven zero.
I move that the table of organization be modified to change the Director of Finance, 12 months, salary group 10, to the position of Executive Director of Financial, associated job description as presented be approved.
Second.
Beth?
Becker?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Shelton?
Hi.
Vanden Hoewel?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Sit Nakow?
Hi.
Past seven zero.
I move that the transfer of Angela Roel, interim Executive Director of Finance, 12 months at the district office building at a salary of $134,111, group two, to Executive Director of Finance, 12 months at the district office building at a salary of $123,451, group three, effective July 1, 2020 as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion there. All right, Beth?
Smith?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Vanden Hoewel?
Hi.
Sit Nakow?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Shelton?
Hi.
Past seven zero.
I move that the transfer of Heather Zelzer, school counselor at Franklin Middle School, 191 days at a salary of $66,797, to interim high school associate principal at Preble High School, 11 months, at a salary of $90,279, group six, effective August 1, 2020 as presented be approved.
Second.
Beth?
Becker?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Shelton?
Hi.
Sit Nakow?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Vanden Hoewel?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
All right, moving on to retirements.
I move that the retirements of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Beth?
McCoy?
Hi.
Shelton?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Sit Nakow?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Vanden Hoewel?
Hi. Passed seven zero, and we will move on to resignations.
I move that the resignations of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Beth?
Becker?
Hi.
Sit Nakow?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Vanden Hoewel?
Hi.
Shelton?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
All right, also passed seven zero, and that concludes our work session. Excuse me, our special board meeting, we're going on to the work session.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Motion, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn our special board meeting.
So moved. Second.
All kinds of seconds.
Third.
Third, yeah, all right, Beth.
Warren?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Sit Nakow?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Shelton?
Hi.
Vanden Hoewel?
Hi. And that concludes our special board meeting. All right, I don't need a motion to go to our work session, do we? Just go or jump right ahead. All right, awesome. We'll start off with our virtual meeting access, so just a reminder to everyone that our meetings are being live streamed on YouTube using Zoom for the time being. If you have any accessibility concerns, you can certainly email servicedesk@gbeps.org. And these will be recorded and stored there as well. I already did meeting attendees, Dr. Langenfeld and her cabinet, joined by Luke Pizzani and Becca Delvo from the inner city student council, and a few other guests who will be presenting for us. So that takes us into the open forum. Right now, our in-person public appearances are suspended until further notice. We are having discussions around ways to allow people to meet in person, working out a few challenges that we have there. But members of the public can speak during open forum or provide written comments in accordance with the procedures on our website, boardofeducation@gbeps.org. We do have two people who have registered to speak at our open forum. Josh, are you ready to go?
Yes, I'll bring the first one in.
All right, perfect. So we'll welcome in Teresa Kakwataj. And Teresa, if you could start by, oh, should you hear?
It's ringing right now, Eric.
Oh, it's ringing, okay.
Here she comes.
She going to say hello first, or am I? Oh, there she is. Teresa, are you there?
Yep, I'm here.
Perfect. Well, thank you for joining us. You have the distinguished honor of being our first call-in board member, or excuse me, community member to give comment. If you could just start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you can begin with your comments.
I'm sure. My name is Teresa Kakwataj. My address is 1228 Delray Drive, Green Bay. I live right behind Southwest High School. And I was asked, or asked if I would like to speak about the NEW School of Innovation. So I have a freshman that attends there, and she had, you know, always attended a regular education school prior to this year as a freshman, and she struggled tremendously. It took three years to get her an IEP. Now, let me start. She didn't exactly have a normal childhood. She was adopted from foster care. She didn't actually get registered into school until she was eight years old. So she missed some crucial early school years and then just never really kind of caught up. But she also learns very differently than a traditional student. She does not do well listening to a lecture, remembering things, and then taking a test to recall that information, so she like needed longer testing times and things like that. And it was just a struggle for her, and she would come home from school frustrated, literally hating school. So her guidance counselor at her, in her eighth grade year, found this program, NEW School of Innovation. They were just, you know, piloting this program. And she was like, I wonder if this would, you know, work for her. I read all about it, and I actually did my associate's degree, my bachelor's degree, and I'm almost completed my master's degree in this same format where it's not a lecture and then you take a test. It's, you learn these concepts and then you demonstrate you understand these concepts through little projects or through, you know, like making a poster. So I have seen a change in my daughter to the point where this year she put so much more effort into her schoolwork, and she was excited about her learning environment. She liked the staff, and she really tried her very best this year compared to any other year in school. So I had the privilege of also serving on the NEW School of Innovation. I was a board member, and in my second meeting on their governance board, the president retired. So, and if nobody else were to step up to take the presidency on, then the charter schools, it could affect the charter schools in the long run. So I stepped up and took that on, and I'm so excited that this school is available for children like mine that don't necessarily learn the same way as somebody else, that they can, you know, meet them where they're at and bring them along and help them be successful in life.
All right.
I have.
That's all you have. Thank you very much for taking the time to share your comments with us, Teresa. We appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thanks. Bye.
All right, that'll take us to our second person. Josh, if you want to give Andrea a call?
Sure, it's ringing out right now. Call was accepted. And there she is.
Hello, Andrea.
Hello.
Hi, this is Eric Vanden Hoewel, board president. Thank you for taking the time to call in and share some of your comments with us. You could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you can begin with what you'd like to say.
Sure. My name is Andrea Theria Wenz, and I live at 2694 Libel Street. I'm a parent and a NEW School of Innovation student. I also teach there in both the seventh, eighth, and ninth grades and senior program. I'm here to share some points about my experience after this successful and important year. Thank you for the time to do so. I've written out my thoughts to you now. Let me set the scene for you from a parent perspective first. My son has always been a naturally curious and self-propelled learner. He bubbles a little with ideas and questions. He commits countless hours to learning things that he finds truly engaging. Unfortunately, this doesn't translate into an affection for school in the traditional sense. Around second or third grade, he started giving up on school as a place that was meaningful and beneficial to him. He struggles to be still, be quiet, and behave. He struggles to organize his ideas and his materials. He sometimes struggles socially, and anxiety paralyzes him from time to time. When I met Jason Johnson, the maker before last, I listened to his vision for the NEW School of Innovation. I came away with a strong feeling of hope and the potential of my son re-engaging in school. I was most reassured by the focus on relationships this school would purposely employ. And additionally, and professionally, I felt that Jason was describing the very thing I wanted to do for kids as an educator. I had spent more than 10 years in another school district leading 21st century skills, digital learning, and personalized learning initiatives. While proud of that work and intention, it had become clear to me that the kind of change my own child needed would not arrive on time. I felt that NEW would be a place of real action toward innovative ideas that account for the variance in learners' backgrounds, strengths, and needs. I have not been disappointed. In fact, I'm very pleased. The staff and faculty I work with at NEW is remarkably strong, talented, and committed. We work diligently on several ideas that are making real change. These include changing the narrative and practice of grading and authentic learning, partnering with learners and owning and advocating for oneself on the foundation of educators wrapping learning design in relationships around kids who struggle for various reasons. I'm happy and proud to say that I've been a part of these efforts at NEW this past year. The ideal is being put into action and it's celebrating. My son will be in ninth grade next year. I'm seeing some things turn around for him. Like many of our other students, there's a learned behavior to reverse, confidence to build, and a general agency and investment to ignite. My son's attendance and enthusiasm has remarkably improved in his first year at NEW. He understands that everyone comes with their own unique past and struggles. He roots for his fellow students. He's invested. I'm over the moon about that. I taught seventh, eighth, and ninth graders and well as seniors this year. Recently, I was conducting a mock interview with one of our seniors. This is a requirement for their graduation from the NEW School of Innovation Academy program. As my makeshift offices in our living room, my son overheard some of the conversations. Later, he made a point to say, whoever that was, I'm really proud of them. I'm proud of all of our students, and my estimation they're making significant inroads of change and influence together. These kids have grown so much emotionally and socially, not just academically. Regularly, I ask my students to reflect on gratitude and positivity. We post thoughts about what is going right at NEW. Our student voices are most important to us. Here are just three of their posted ideas. I really like this school, and I love all the teachers because they actually care about you. Something cool about this school is how flexible the teachers are. Something cool about this school is the teachers. They want to help us learn but also have fun. And I also like the way they teach here. Thank you to the board and to the district for supporting NEW's mission, our staff, and more importantly, most importantly, our students. With your continued support and confidence that more parents will have lighter hearts, which is mine, more educators can feel good about finally making the real change that kids deserve. I can't tell you how much I look forward to being a part of the continued growth at NEW. Do you still have work to do? Absolutely, and I can't wait to get back to it. Thank you.
Andrea, thank you very much for taking the time to share those comments with us. We truly do appreciate it. Are you there, Andrea?
Yes. My pleasure.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, awesome. Okay, we will move into the discussion items, the teaching and learning work session, and that will be facilitated by Brenda Warren.
Thanks, Eric. The first item that will be moving forward for a vote is the new policy for English learners. Melissa, are you going to?
I think John, John may, John's going to kind of walk through all of the discussion items, I think, tonight in teaching.
Okay.
Sure. So, and I'm pulling up my notes at the same time, so I apologize. But basically, the previous policy we had related to English learners was last updated in 2005, so there were some new requirements and things that we wanted to incorporate. Basically, the Department of Public Instruction developed an EL policy handbook that was released last year. And so the main work around this is making sure that our policies are compliant and aligned with what that DPI guidance is showing. We had put in place some of the practices, but we wanted to make sure that the policy was updated as well to reflect that. So the work of the EL team, in particular Julie Seifelt and her folks who had worked on this quite a bit. It was Julie's birthday today, and so I wanted to make sure that I was sharing that she wouldn't have minded being here on her birthday too. But some of the highlights of the change are reflected in some of the work around the Every Student Succeeds Act of 2015. Basically, one of the changes that was made at that time was making sure that the state mandated home language survey for all districts was part of the enrollment process for students. Green Bay area public schools implemented this requirement last year when it was released. We did have some home language requirements prior to that, but they're aligned, and they were aligned as soon as those DPI guidelines came out. Additionally, students who are now automatically, students are now automatically exited from the EL status when they receive a score of 5.0 on the, on the access test. The access test, as you know, is the main test for showing proficiency of our English language learners. Students may be reclassified or exited out of EL status when they score a 4.5 to a 4.9 as long as the district follows the guidelines in the EL policy handbook developed by DPI, which requires evidence to be gathered using multiple indicator protocol. So you could put together a portfolio of work that would show that even though a student was really close but hadn't quite exited according to the access, that they had those standards mastered and that they were able to exit if they had a slightly lower score than would normally be what you would look for. Another change was related to the state content assessments, and thinking about that, that would be the And thinking about that, that would be the forward exam and A C T. Basically, the recently arrived E Ls, those students who have been in school less than three years, can have a one-year exemption on the state's English Language Arts Assessment. E L students who claim this uh exemption must take all, all the access testing for E Ls, which counts as their participation for those state content assessments. Uh, but after that one-year exemption is used, they're required to take all of the state's English Language Arts Assessments. So that is uh, uh, those are the main changes in those, those policies. Uh, but, but also think about that, that, that with these, the state content assessments piece, that we will be asking our students who have been in, in country for a year, in some cases, to start taking the regular forward E L testing. So that's gonna be something that we'll be getting used to, but it's something that was required by the state and something that was part of their guidance. And so we're making sure that we're being compliant in our policy work. Any questions on this?
Looks like no questions. So move that forward to our regular.
Andrew had his hand up.
Right button here. Trying to fix the glare and the lights here, but um. The issue where there's um waiver opportunity, if you're in the gray area of the just under 5.0, what um, what is the benefit to the student or the, or the school to exit that student? Or a potential benefit, I understand you might, sometimes you may do it, sometimes you might not, that's why it's a.
Sure. Sure, and I think we wanna consider that on a case-by-case basis. Normally, we would keep students classified as E L, uh, but sometimes we want to allow students to have uh greater access to the non-E L classes. And so um, and those are made on a, on a regular basis as well. But it's basically the, the state just saying, if, if the person is close and you can provide documentation, you could exit that student. We don't look at doing so necessarily on a, on a regular basis. But sometimes for our students, it's, it's also seen as a, uh, I mean, it's definitely seen as a, is, is an achievement and as an honor. So once they've achieved that mastery, it's, it's nice for them to be able to officially exit the E L program. It's sometimes seen as, you know, in some ways maybe as important as, as graduation because they're, they're achieving mastery in, in another language. And so if a student was very, very close but able to be able to show through other measures that they had achieved that, that that would give us uh reason for, for moving forward.
All right, um, any other questions? Okay, then we'll move that forward to our regular board meeting. Next is um our summer school policy. John, you wanna introduce that?
Sure. And uh, once again, this is, this is more of a issue of wanting to make sure that our policies are compliant with new guidelines from the Department of Public Instruction. Uh, basically, uh, school boards have had the option of offering additional summer or interim academic classes that are uh related to similar uh instruction to what we offer during the regular academic year. Uh, summer school courses also provide extra time for students to reinforce their, and extend their learning from the school year as part of their, uh, is part of a way to prevent learning loss during the summer months. This is even more important this year, of course, because we've had our COVID closure. And so we wanna make sure that that is documented in, in the work we have moving together. Currently, the district does not have a board policy on summer school, and this policy is based on the D P I rules and statute, uh, state statute language. Melissa Theo-Coller evaluated board policies across the state and the development of the policy as well.
John, if I can just correct you, we do have a, a policy on summer school. It was adopted in 2015. It's policy 351. But it did not provide this breadth of detail that um we were able to find for best practices and the model policies as well as to reflect our program.
Thank you, Melissa.
Yep.
Any questions on that? All right, seeing none, we'll move that forward. Next is the uh course essential documents and resources for Heritage, Heritage Spanish one and two.
Sure. And so um, some of these elements we would have liked to have moved forward with sooner, but a lot of the work of the uh Teaching and Learning Department was, was shifted as we went into the closure for COVID and focused on making sure that we were maintaining learning for our students and focused on remote learning policies and things of that nature. So um, there was, there was some work done by uh related to, some of our work related to our dual-language and bilingual offerings. And one thing that was seen was if we have students in our uh I B offerings through um Franklin Middle School, one, one component of I B work is that students are taking a foreign language. And so we wanna make sure that if a student is a English-speaking student here in Green Bay, that they're, they have an opportunity of taking French or have an opportunity of taking, taking Spanish or another world language. Our E L students who are going through Franklin, we wanna make sure are offered a similar opportunity to develop their skills in, in at least one other language. And so we wanted to make sure that was the case. But by the same token, they quite often have uh two languages in place already. They, they have mastery of um Spanish and, and are beginning their, their acquiring of, of English. And we wanted to make sure, however, that if you are a heritage Spanish speaker, that we offer uh opportunity for support so that you can gain academic expertise in the language as well. Having been a Spanish teacher myself, sometimes uh you would find that there was a high level of conversational Spanish. But when it came to uh being able to read and write with, with proficiency, then sometimes there was a need to brush up on some of those skills. And what this course is designed to do is give those first-language Spanish speakers an opportunity to really refine their language skills so that they will be uh more marketable uh and that they will have that opportunity to um, to really excel in academic Spanish as well in reading and writing. And that aligns with the needs for the international baccalaureate work that they have to uh perform as part of their, their schooling through uh Franklin and um West High School. So those two courses are, are designed to basically teach that proficiency.
Are there any questions? Rhonda?
John, this is a question, I guess, I'm thinking about, do we have any, or do you have any concerns about, you know, we're being asked to, to, to purchase this, implement it. Um, if in the fall, we don't go to a scenario where we're in the buildings. Do you have any concerns? And is any of this curriculum able to be modified? Do you, do you feel that it can be modified for teachers if, in fact, we were not to be in buildings, or at least we were not to be in buildings at full capacity, you know, Monday through Friday?
John, you're on mute.
Yeah, sorry. I was uh just working on a couple of things in the background here. Um, but yes, I think that, that the, of course, any, any of the coursework we're working on, uh whether it's courses that are currently in place or courses that we're adopting, we wanna make sure that we are being flexible as we go into the fall. Not to turn this into a separate teaching and learning discussion, but many districts have, have worked on planning for three or four possible scenarios. And what is it, what do things look like if we have to go with scenario A, B, C, or D? But we've, and we've, we've developed those, but we've actually, I think, taken one step further in realizing that we're gonna have to look at multiple scenarios uh for multiple schools at the same time. You might have closure at one school while you have another school open, for instance. And we wanna make sure that our, our teaching staff have professional learning opportunities prior to uh instructing in those settings so that they are, are well-prepared to provide engaging instruction in those, in those environments. And so uh really, the uh professional learning that would take place related to these courses, in particular, because we know it going in, uh, we would want to make sure that it was well-preparing our teachers to make sure that the instruction was engaging, whether it was a remote learning, blended learning, or face-to-face type option. So those are, those are things that we have factored in. It was also, uh, I wanna note that it was really the work of a large number of people that, that, that worked on this. We had members of the Franklin and Edison uh staff involved in the, 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 the work on this as well as the Latinx, uh Latina, uh culture class that's gonna be offered. And so, so those were, were courses that uh the staff of the dual-language programming uh in both buildings were involved in production of those, those courses.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, we'll move that forward. Next is the um Washington Middle School eighth-grade arts elective courses. John?
Sure. And as you know, the Fine Arts Pathway has been in place at Washington Middle School uh for two years now. And as it rolls up into eighth grade, we wanted to make sure the courses uh that have been um informally developed were put, put into formal development mode and brought forward to the board for approval. So we have uh some, three courses that are, that are being looked at for um moving forward for, with our eighth-grade students as they move into a, an eighth-grade fine arts, uh, fine arts programming course. And I wanna say thanks to the board for their support in the administrative changes we've uh moved forward with, with Ms. Sykes moving into the Fine Arts Pathway at the elementary level. And I think that those, those leadership supports going from elementary through middle through high school are gonna be really important for uh continuing, continuing to develop and foster that fine arts programming. But we also wanna make sure that the uh, the links of curriculum are there as well. I think that this is kind of like the transcontinental railroad where you have some things built at elementary and you have some things built at high school. This is the final link or that uh, that golden spike, so to speak, of the eighth-grade curriculum that links up the elementary to the, to the uh high school curriculum. And that will provide seamless support for our students as they move forward on this uh Fine Arts Pathway.
Any questions? And John, then, you know, the courses that are being offered, I think, look really, really great and I hope the Washington um students are excited about them. They, um, my question is the same as Rhonda's. I think we can all envision much more easily how you do a foreign language class online versus a dance um class online. And, and I'm just curious how that's being managed during um this virtual learning.
Sure.
Because we have dance, um, well, we have dance in the seventh grade at Washington. And then do we have dance at um East Two in high, at high school, in high school yet? No, okay. So um, so anyway, I'm just curious how that um, just for me and other people that might be wondering how you, how you do those kinds of classes, dance, fayed, um, you know, where everybody's supposed to be quite active as opposed to reading and writing kinds of things.
Sure. And I think about instruction that I've seen, uh, as well as some things that I participated in myself related to uh different classes that are being taught online where maybe there's a uh instructor who's providing the general instruction on movement and what should be occurring. But then there's also a component where maybe the student might be uh putting together videotape of themselves and sharing it. Uh, there was a uh presentation, actually I saw, uh, by the students of Juilliard where they put together a dance production of all the different uh people working together and combining and put, put together this, this really intricate online dance performance. I'm not saying that that's quite the level that we can get to, but I know that's really, ju- just shy of Juilliard, uh, that, that could be something that we can work on where we can have our students really um putting together something that was produced together in, in unison. And I've, my uh, other, other people I know that my, my son, for instance, is attending a fine arts uh school as well and looking at some of the things that are being produced jointly despite the closure. Uh, there, there really is some, some pretty intricate, pretty interesting work that can be done. There's also an ability to have that um small group instruction uh that, that is sometimes needed. And sometimes even, I can also see with something like dance where you're giving very individualized critique to middle school students who might be, you know, sometimes sensitive to, to classmates' perception and things like that, where, where actually some individualized feedback might be uh better received in a smaller group and, and done in a way that's, that's uh really more of a um growth mindset opportunity for the student where they're not gonna be taking it as harsh criticism in front of a class of 30.
Yeah, thank you for that. Anybody else? All right, then we'll move that forward. Next is the uh course essential document for the adaptive physical education assistant course.
Sure. And we've actually been doing some work related to, we've, we've talked a lot about different pathways. We talked about how we have our manufacturing pathway at West and we have uh our, our Fine Arts Pathway and a variety of other pathways we have in the district. One thing that we were working on as well is our instructor-teacher pathway. What are we putting together to make sure that we are uh making sure our next generation of teachers are homegrown and supported? That can be something that leads to greater diversity in our workforce as well. Uh, thinking about opportunities to give our high school students um an opportunity to see what it feels like to be a teacher and to sometimes get dual-credit offering. This is not particularly a dual-credit offering course, but when we look at our high-needs areas, uh, one of our highest need areas is our special education area. And uh, as you know, when we're hiring for special education, quite often we're doing so with emergency certification and things of that nature. We want an opportunity for our students to not just take that dual-language pedagogy course, but to take uh a course where they could um work with students of special needs and really see if it was a, a calling for them through some hands-on experience. And this course was developed, there's, there's work being done with it by the physical education teachers at, at Southwest related to lifeguarding and some other things. Uh, but this, this fits kind of with those two, two themes of making sure that we have those physical education needs met, but also thinking about how can we expose students to the opportunity of working, working hands-on with students with special need. This is not meant as a class of 10 or 15 or 20 students. This is meant as more of a very deeply guided um, kind of a teacher's assistant-type model where a teacher who is working with students with, with adaptive physical education needs, uh, developed, the program was developed through the special education and through the P E department, that that teacher could have somebody who is a higher-level student assist them and kind of work with the students so that there was an extra set of eyes, an extra set, set of hands to work with the students in a very structured and supportive way to see if this might be a calling to our students and give them an opportunity to learn in that area and perhaps uh get into special education or teaching in general.
Any questions?
That sounds really great, John. Thanks for putting that together.
I wish I could take total credit, but it's definitely the work of the Southwest teachers and the Teaching and Learning Department. I'm just bringing their work forward, but it is good work. I'm impressed.
All right, we'll move that forward. Last, Eric. Oh, Christina, sorry, you're on the other screen.
Sorry, I just wanted to just mention to my fellow board members, uh, if we are ever back in school, when we are back in school person with everyone, I encourage you to get over to Southwest to see this program in action. Um, it is, it, it's a beautiful program. It's hands-on. The students are working with students. It's everything that um I love to see in adaptive P E. So, John, thanks for everyone's leadership in this, and I encourage everyone to, to get in there and see it with your own eyes.
All right. Thanks, Christina. All right, finally, we've got the course essential document and professional development for Cultura Latina.
Sure. And, and the Cultura Latina uh course is a course that was developed by the teachers at uh Franklin Middle School as well as um Edison Middle School. Uh, there was involvement by Natalie Ninehouse, the, the uh, the principal from D O D as well, who happens to be bilingual, and the uh, Luis Franco, who is our bilingual family services coordinator, as well as Beth Wright, our bilingual coordinator. So um Francisco and Sarah from, from Edison and Franklin were, were highly involved in the development of this class. And it's really an opportunity, um, there was a need for um, there was a need for, for an additional course for our, our dual-language students. And we wanted to make sure that it to make sure that it was something that was really worthwhile from an academic standpoint, as well as something that would be culturally affirming and allow for a better understanding of of student culture. And so this course was developed, is particularly at this point going to be starting at Franklin because that's where it fits best. But it is something we would consider moving forward for for our other bilingual dual language students because it offers a deeper understanding of Latino culture and Latinx culture that we think we think that will be important for a couple of reasons. One, it provides context for those students that are going through, particularly the first and second language students. But it also provides additional affirmation. I think in a time when we are thinking about race and culture, and that's at the forefront of our conversations, any opportunity we have to make sure that that people feel that lift and feel that that general or that deeper community desire to understand and reach out and connect, this is a really, really important opportunity for us to increase our opportunity for for that type of involvement. So this this will be a course that that students who are either Latino themselves or students who are in the dual language programming can can better understand Latin culture. And having participated in some classes myself that were similar when I was Spanish major as a undergraduate, I think that it is a great opportunity for our kids. You we all learn about different ethnic study courses at a college level. This is in some ways kind of a middle school version of what that type of learning can be.
Any any questions on that? Nope. All right, then we'll move that forward. And I just want to say a global thank you to all of the people that have been involved in all of these courses. I know at a time when there's a lot of other things going on and a lot of things grabbing their attention. I know this was added added on to a very, a very full plate for many people, but I'm excited about the courses, as I think other board members have expressed. And so pass along our thanks to the team. And with that concludes our report, and I'll turn it back to Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. That wraps up teaching and learning. That will move to our organizational support work session, and that is facilitated by Andrew Becker. All right, we have three items under business and finance discussion items. First one we have is the CISA CISA seven contract learning material to be presented or any board member questions?
The document is posted for everyone, and it's very similar to last year. And you can see which items will be federally funded as well. They typically have been in the past.
All right. Any Christina?
Yeah, just any is there any there doesn't seem to be any significant changes. Is anything that comes to mind, Michelle, that was worthwhile for you from last year?
But I think that in terms of changes or recommended changes?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of changes, in terms of both.
You know, I think we still have the after school programming staffing piece in there that's very important. And that's a big ticket item. Another big ticket item is really supporting our students in their learning for independence program that's been in place for a very long time. Our students who leave our our high schools to go on to college at NWTC as part of their programming. So those are two really large, significant pieces. And then, of course, the administration of some of the CISA programming, but pretty much everything else is the same. We do have a video production service included in there for graduations, very similar to what our current virtual graduations are. And I think one of the things that I would offer, I think you'll be very pleasantly surprised at the virtual graduations. Dean did a really great job, and Laurie Blakesley, and then all the principals submitting. There's some creative stuff in in some of the graduations as well. So really taking and personalizing some of them as well. So I think that's really another ticket item that we didn't. This is based on for next year, the same cost, but it looks very similar. And then the videotaping of the board meetings and the, of course, the closed captioning is in there. So it looks very much the same from where I recall.
Thanks. I have a question about this contract or this this document. If, in fact, again, we go forward, we're not in buildings, we're not in the same format, the teaching learning format that we had when this last contract was put forward, is this, is it possible to adjust? I'm assuming, I mean, we're not, they're not taping our board meetings in the same way now. We're live streaming them. We don't anticipate this changing in the near future. Will it be an opportunity to have a conversation about revisiting the details of this document if, in fact, we don't have the same?
I know Melissa's been putting COVID information in other other contracts, and they've usually been very amenable to change CISA has. So I'll, I can see you're unmuted, Melissa, so go ahead if you'd like to add.
Yeah, thank you. So a number of the charges, Rhonda, would not be affected because we would still need those services. With respect to the learning for independence contract and the 21 CC after school program, the learning for independence would continue as it has this year because those services were offered online instruction for our students. But we we do do another agreement with respect to that learning for independence contract because it spells out many more details. This is just the price, but there's additional details. Once the board approves the spending with this contract, there's an additional contract for that program. And we have written language in there with respect to if the program can't be delivered virtually, that the cost would be refunded to the district at a prorated amount. The the other charges in here, such as the integrated leadership network, the DEAC network, the digital learners network, those things, those things do continue as well as the agenda manager, that's the cost for the program that the board uses with respect to your meetings. The video production services, they CISA is not streaming that. If you remember, we went to our own equipment. The cost is based on the the closed captioning and then the video production services with respect to the the graduation. So I know that Laurie was working this year when we were not going to have the graduation ceremonies and CISA was very amenable to changing what those charges would be for with producing the virtual graduations.
And if I may interject, Rhonda, my experience as a superintendent in a neighboring district, we were also a CISA seven district and partner with CISA seven. And we were always able to use the services that we actually purchased as the end result of the final contract so that that was adjusted to what we actually used.
So I appreciate that information. So you've had a conversation with them around potential changes to what our our school year is going to look like potentially. We don't really know. So you can, I mean, you feel that comfortable with that?
Yeah, I I'll be talking with Jeff tomorrow, but they've been very flexible as we moved along the entire time. And I think that because they serve all school districts, we're all in the same place with them as well. So we're together. But I can certainly circle back and confirm I I truly believe they've been very flexible, would work with us whatever we needed. So.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else on the CISA contract? All right, we will move that forward. Our next is meal prices for 2021. We have the information attached. And do you have anything, Lynette, before we go to board questions?
If I might just interject, because I did provide Lynette with some direction at the beginning of the discussion internally and administratively with respect to prices. And we'd agreed that we would propose to the board no increase in fees. And we also agreed administratively that we would not increase the hot lunch price as well if that was possible. And so Lynette did have that as a directive. She went through, did the calculations, so that she got the minimum number that we could use so that the free and reduced prices aren't subsidizing the price value of the lunch that sold to other to paying customers. And so she calculated the minimum price happened to be the exact same price that we used last year. So with respect to the school nutrition food reimbursement program from the federal government, we cannot charge less than that, or we would be subsidizing those paying customers with free and reduced money coming from the federal government. So she calculated the bare minimum, and that's what we're recommending.
All right. So no, no changes proposed for this year? Any board questions or comments?
Hi, everyone.
Yes.
How often are we revisiting to see if we have any additional schools that qualify for CEP? Great question.
Well, I do know that we are continuing to solicit information going out so that people who are filling out free and reduced applications, because certainly with the downturn in the economy and the COVID crisis, there could be more that would qualify. We want parents to be able to qualify. And if they do at any time during the year, they qualify for the whole year. So as their income fluctuates, if there's a downturn in in anyone's income, they may qualify, and then they qualify for the whole year. We want those numbers to be as high as we can. And we're pretty continuously marketing that. In fact, we're coming up with a strategy to push out information again to parents because of the crisis and hoping we'll get more that will be willing to sign up and put their application in for free and reduced. That was a good question, Rhonda.
Sorry, I saw Lynette was going to talk before when Pete started talking, we didn't know.
Go ahead, Lynette, if you want.
So I just like Christina's hand, but you're muted.
I was just waiting to be called on. Lynette, as you are thinking about your strategies for engaging families to receive those forms, let's connect because I was talking doing some community outreach and got some great suggestions from some community folks and some state level folks. So I'll reach out to you about that separately.
Please do.
This is Vicki. I'd be interested in being a part of that conversation as well, please. Thank you.
And I guess what I would like to share is that we are working fluidly with making sure that families know to continue to fill out free and reduced applications because it's such a benefit for our district and with and for the families. So we we are getting information out, and Laurie Blakesley is assisting us with that also.
So Lynette or or Pete, what is the, I guess, look back period for, because you said if you qualified for, if you qualify for part of the year, you qualify for the the whole year?
Yeah, and I I think that I'm not positive, Andrew, if there's a retro effectiveness to that. I think it's just moving forward. But once you qualified in a year, your income can change dramatically, can go up, can go down. Doesn't matter, you're free and reduced, free or reduced for the whole year based on that application.
In this particular case, if we're looking at maybe someone who lost wages due to COVID, that might, and hopefully perhaps by now that might be resolved for them or before next school year might be resolved, that might not be a situation that would change our numbers for for this year. But if someone is still coming back to reduce hours next year or or anything, they can stay with it for the entirety of the year if they qualify in September. But someone who had just a dip in income this spring, it may be only affecting things for this year when we're providing meals anyways, so it may not.
Well, what will happen with that? I can answer that for you, Andrew. What will happen if they apply for free and reduced right now? That free and reduced status will, they will carry that that through to mid October. I want to say the date for the 2021 school year is October 16. So if they do have a period of time where they can reapply.
So beginning in the school year, then in September, Andrew, they're automatically on the roll as free or reduced based upon their current qualification until such time that they would have to recertify that. And that would be in October.
There is definitely then for the person who might still be on furlough or something, it is still advantageous to apply because that would be beneficial next, at least a part of next fall.
Yes, absolutely.
Even if they're quite certain their situation will change, that help would be there for at least the beginning of the year. Okay. Thank you. Other other questions or comments? All right. Thank you. We will move that forward. And then we have the long range facility plan capital improvement. Do you want to introduce that, Pete?
Yeah, this is just a perfunctory document that needs to be attached to the Fund 46. And the reason that we're doing this is a result of you passing the Fund 46 resolution. Now, interestingly enough, we incorporated this long range plan exactly identically to the one that you have in front of you tonight in that resolution. And our trust fund advisor that will be using for Fund 46 suggested to us that that was enough of a motion that the board had this plan out there that they saw that they approved along with the Fund 46 resolution. But he said it would be cleaner if you passed it as a separate entity. Now, the plan doesn't mean that you have to do those things that are there. What this is simply stating is the board acknowledges that the district has engaged in long term planning for facility maintenance and improvement, which we have. And certainly, Mike Stengel in his office would have much more detailed documents typically for these Fund 46 resolutions and adoptions. These are single page plans. Mike put together a two page plan of things that potentially would be on the list and that come up year after year with the one singular exception, of course, that we have those carbon abatement projects or the energy abatement projects listed in this long range plan because we do intend to to take those on one at a time. Remember, the Fund 46 does, it's got a timeframe. In other words, you have to put some money in, whether you put five bucks in or you put $500,000 in Fund 46. You can't spend any money until the clock starts ticking. So it's very important that we put some money in this year at the end of the fiscal year so that that five year clock starts ticking so that you can burn that time off. Once the time is burned off, you can put money in and use it the next year, put money in, use it the next year, and actually use it as the fiscal management tool it was designed to be used for. But we've got to burn that five year time clock. So our intention would be just to to put some funds in it this year to do that. This motion, again, or this long range plan is something that just simply is a formality that has to be passed that we can put along with that resolution going forward so we can open up a Fund 46 account.
Okay, so this reflects reflects current plans anyways. It's it's fully amenable by the board in the future. Any other questions about about the plan? All right, we will go ahead and move that forward. And then we have the employee benefits presentation. So we will have the we'll have the overview by M3, and then we will open it up to to board questions. So.
Thanks, Andrew. I'll I'll just give it just a quick introduction, and then I'll turn it over to Cindy and and Marty Moye. As you know, this year, we have been really trying to get in front of the board and continue to provide additional information regarding our benefit plans from health insurance through all all the other benefits.
plans from health insurance through all, all the other benefits that we offer our employees. We thought tonight it would be beneficial to the board as we are working through our new reality of living with COVID, for M3 to provide an update to the board with respect to how this public health emergency has affected the benefits that we offer our employees and what those benefits and the impact of the pandemic is going to have on our benefits into the future. And we wanted to provide you with information related to the employee side, the health benefits, the dental, all those wellness sort of policies, as well as our property insurance, liability insurance, work comp insurance. So tonight, we have Cindy Van Aston and Marty Malloy from M3 who are gonna provide that update for you.
Thank you, Melissa. Josh, I can't see from my screen, but I'm assuming everybody has the health and dental plan summary performance document. Oh, thank you.
I'm sharing it.
Okay, thank you. So this is a document that we've shared before, looking at how the plan is performing to date, both the medical and the dental. And on the top-left corner, where we're looking at all combined, that's our actives and retirees and all of the different plan options. Our average enrollment from July 1 of 2019 through April of 2020 is 2,864 employees. The total plan costs through the first 10 months of the plan year at $37 million. Our projected plan costs with the rates, which is shy of $40 million, and for a dollar difference of $2.884 million. The direct near-site clinic contract that we have in place with Pervaya and Valen since March of last, the previous year, $6.355,592. And our funding loss ratio to date is at 93% loss ratio. Prior year funding ratio, July 2018 through April 2019, was at 104% loss ratio. And our total costs per employee per year are at $15,527 compared to the public sector benchmark of $16,452. When we look at breaking out the active covered members versus the retirees, you can see our average enrollment through April at 2,466 for actives and 398 for retirees. The funding loss ratio in the, in the current plan is performing at 88% for the actives and 158% for the retirees compared to the same time last year at 97% and 198 for retirees. The dental plan has 3,797 enrolled members in it. That plan costs through April of 2020 at $3,192,787. The projected plan forecasts at $3,573,927 for a dollar difference of $381,140, leaving a set of funding loss ratio of 89% compared to same time last year at 96% loss ratio. And our total cost per employee per year in dental at $1,009 compared to the public sector benchmark. I'll stop there and ask if there's any questions, but the next few pages I'd like to walk through is talk, we'll talk a little bit about, as Melissa mentioned, the impact of COVID and what we've seen in the plan performance coming late out of March and through the month of April.
Okay, so anyone with questions? I have to scroll here now because the thing is up. So just unmute. That's how I know you have a question, otherwise we'll move on. Eric, no. Nope, you're good. Okay, nobody else is unmuted. Michelle, you good? Okay, all right, then. Go ahead, Cindy.
Thank you very much. So the plant, so the plant performance, as you know, we have the impact of COVID. We have, really, we're looking at avoided and deferred care. M3 has worked with our partners, companies, and actuaries across the United States through our C2 relationship, looking at carefully calculating what we believe the impact to be of these avoided and deferred care impact. When we look at avoided care, we're really, we're looking at it based on estimated cost of half a percent of the yearly medical cost per week of safer at home. And the assumptions that we're using to date are through the end of April. And I'll just note, we're continuing to watch the impact as data becomes available and credible to change this. And the deferred costs are estimated at four tenths of a percent of the yearly medical cost for each week that we were safer at home. To combine together, it's just shy of $2.5 million. We believe that the deferred costs will actually, if you could stand that page, that would be great. Sorry about that. The deferred costs, we believe, will have about 25% impact in the calendar year 2020 and 75% impact into calendar year 2021. For the district, you're coming in the tail end of your plan year 7-1. So there's going to be a little lag in reduced plan costs in the tail end of this year, and then we'll see those push out later to 2020 into 21. Has had 27 members tested and one confirmed case for an average load cost of $71.64. Now, that's just claims that were pushed through the plan in the, in the first eight weeks and reported into UMR. As far as the dental plan impacts go, we believe there will be about a 1% impact on deferred and avoided care. But right now, the projection is that that'll end up frankly being planned savings, that a lot of the avoided care won't necessarily be pushed as you think of the preventative routine care, that members who are due for their preventative may just skip that one and go into their second one as we pull through and become safer to go into some of those establishments. You may note the provider delivery systems are really pushing that their facilities are open and safe as consumer confidence has dropped to a safe place to go. And as the medical care systems have changed how they're delivering care, you're gonna see much more into that virtual care. But what I want to make note of here is that the large carriers like United Healthcare, which UMR is part of, Anthem, Humana, have waived on their plan large claim edits in an order to process claims faster. So the claim turnaround that they're experiencing right now is 10 days, and that is to keep cash flow moving for the provider to delivery system. And the claim edits that normally would go in to watch large claims are happening on the backend. So we may see some impact to backend and a refund or recovery of dollars if some of those edits were missed. I go to the next page, Josh. So during this time of the safer at home, we had open enrollment. We did open enrollment this year through some technology called Novio, which is knowledge video. We did them both live and recorded. We maintained the employee hotline and spent email out support. We added telehealth services to the plan effective on March 1, 2020 through the end of 2020 calendar year. Be important to note that the telehealth services that we added were allowing patient-to-physician virtual care services, not the Teladoc 24/7 where you may call in the middle of the night because you have a cold or flu symptoms. But this is really care that a member might have gone in to seek face-to-face, that now the provider delivery systems are trying to offer that virtual care for that same visit if they don't need hands-on care. Sure that we cover those services. And then during this pandemic, we would have had a benefit advisory committee meeting. We're looking to send them written, updated questions I could entertain on that medical portion.
Repeat the last 20 seconds. Sorry, we're cutting out quite a bit there.
Sure. The part from telehealth services?
Yeah, the telehealth services were additional services where you might be seeing your own provider, and it's not just the supplementary telehealth services. But then whatever you said just at the very end of that, we lost.
So the telehealth services are patient-to-physician virtual care that a member, if they were going in face-to-face and the health system deemed they could handle it virtually versus hands-on, those will be covered services. I should also make note that the, in April, there was a modifier code to the data that's sent in. So as we go through the virtual care, we'll be able to pull some data to understand how many folks are seeking care through virtual means versus face-to-face with their physician.
Okay, that last part is what, what we missed. Okay, I will check for, go through any questions at this point. Take yourself off mute. No, I'll look again going backwards. Okay, you can go ahead and continue then, Cindy.
Right, I'm gonna turn it over to Marty to touch on workers' compensation and liability insurance.
So much like health insurance, there has been reduced activity in claims. So for workers' compensation, it's highly regulated, pricing is highly regulated. But as you have less claims as a school district, there's a, an experience modification which is added to the regulated premium by the state of Wisconsin to reduce it. Already over the last five years, you've had a 26% reduction in that experience modification. It's going to continue to go down as claim costs go down. And for many of the same reasons that Cindy was talking about with the healthcare system, claims are gonna continue to go down for the district. There's gonna be more telehealth and virtual care, which theoretically will be less expensive than an office visit, so that will reduce claims. If we continue to go through the summer without having employees in school, employees are not being injured on the job, so less claims are being filed. The school district does a great job again on workers' compensation. You can't tell an employee in the state of Wisconsin where they can receive care for workers' compensation, but you can suggest. The district's done a great job of using its own onsite and near-site clinics where the cost of care is less. That is helping to reduce costs. And a big thing that helps us in Wisconsin compared to some other states looking forward is a communicable disease like COVID-19 is not considered to be work-related. So it's highly unlikely that even if an employee gets COVID-19 during the school year, that it would be considered compensable by the state of Wisconsin because the statute says that a communicable disease is presumed to be of cause anywhere in the public, not just work. The big issue that I see going forward is mental health claims in workers' compensation. There are going to be people that are going to be afraid to come back to work. And if they do have an injury and they're afraid to come back to work, they may have an issue in a return-to-work situation. And that's where you want to work with M3 and your human resource department to make sure that not only are we deploying our workers' compensation resources, but our employee assistance program, our long-term disability program are working together to get that employee back to work. Because when we look at the cost of workers' compensation, the best way for an employer to reduce the cost of workers' compensation is to return an injured employee to work under modified duty. So all of that being said, this will help your costs go down, but that experience modification that controls your pricing is a lagging indicator. So anything that happens this year is not gonna affect that until two years from now. But you are going in the right direction anyway. This will just help you head further in that direction for workers' compensation. We're watching some national trends at M3. There are some states that are changing their statute to make the presumption that COVID-19, if an employee tests positive, that regardless of how they got the disease, that it's going to be work-related. We don't think that's going to happen in Wisconsin, but it bears watching. That could also slightly drive up costs on a national basis, and we're gonna follow those developments closely. So I don't have a slide for property, which I'll talk about, but first I'll ask if anyone has questions on workers' compensation.
Okay, if any members have questions, we'll, Rhonda?
Hi, thank you. Would you be able to reference what statute you were referring to when you talked about COVID not being included in workers' compensation?
So it's, the, the workers' compensation statute in Wisconsin does not specifically address communicable diseases. But traditionally, in the state of Wisconsin, for a communicable disease considered to be in the course of or arising out of employment, the employee must prove that there was no other part of their life or their lifestyle or any way else they could have gotten the disease.
Do you by any chance have number or any source of what that statute is specifically?
I could get you the number of the workers' compensation statute.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's 122-point-something, but I'll get the exact number for you.
All right, any other questions or comments from the board? Take yourself off mute. All right, and then go ahead and continue then, please.
Yeah, so I don't have a slide on property insurance because it's not really that complicated. We've seen, over the last five years, we've seen a general increase in property insurance premiums. We're going to continue to see that. The major thing that could affect property insurance premium going forward is if the federal government or the courts were to say that business interruption losses from COVID-19 should be covered by private insurance, that will increase the cost going forward. So we can still continue to expect our normal increases that we've been seeing in property insurance of 10% to 20% per year going forward. But that could increase even more if COVID-19 business interruption cases are either legislatively or through the court system found, the insurance companies are found to be liable for those claims.
Okay, any questions on that?
Andrew?
Yeah, yes.
If I could just, I also want to add that during the course of this pandemic, we had reached out to Cindy Van Aston and Beck Krizinski with respect to wanting to be able to have a forum to ask questions of the large medical providers here in the area because we have been on weekly phone calls and webinars with them focused on issues related to COVID and how it's impacting employers and the community. And there were school-specific questions. So I just wanted to, to let you all know that Cindy and Beck put together a series of four or five-part series webinars over the past four or five weeks focused specifically just for school districts related to COVID. And I want to acknowledge that and thank them for doing that. One of them was lining up with Pervaya and Valen just so that we, schools could ask our school-specific questions. They also put together a mental health webinar. Marty was on a webinar with respect to property insurance, work comp, and other liability issues. And last week, we had another one. So again, just a huge thank you, and it's been a great resource and a great partnership because this has, I know Jennifer's on the meeting right now too as well. The, the issues that have come before us have been huge, and every day there's something new, and I'm very thankful that we have this resource. So thank you for letting me add that.
Okay, and then anything else?
The only other comment I would make, thank you for that, Melissa. I will be, intend to come back to the board in September with an updated health plan data dashboard that we had showed you will to be a year in September to keep you current and updated how the trends have changed year over year. And we'll have a full update on how open enrollment ended at that point as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any overall board questions or comments? All right. All right. Okay, thank you very much to to M3. And then continuing on, we have setting future agendas. Any future agenda topic requests? Michelle?
Thank you. And I also wanted to echo what Melissa said about the partnership with M3 and give a shout out to Melissa and Jennifer and the team as well. These are not easy things to manage because they keep moving. So having accurate and timely information is really critically important. And M3, I would say, having sat on many, 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 many of these webinars, they were spot-on and really helpful, focused on schools and school needs. So thank you for that. My topic, as as I wrap up, this is, I wanted to put, and it'll be at my report next, next time we meet, focused on the surveys. I know that I shared with you, as well as the teachers and my update to our weekly, my, and to the entire district staff, that we would be surveying them as well. So they receive the same information that the board did, that we will be providing a survey in the next couple of days. Hopefully, we can get it out to staff. Really looking at forward in terms of their preference and comfort levels moving into the fall, really trying to understand where parents are lining up in terms of if they would like to bring their children to school. I know that received something today where the mother said, we have to do in-person. Virtual is not working for our house. So really looking at where parents are comfortable, what kinds of things they need in place in terms of feeling safe and having their children come to school, and the same kinds of questions for staff as well. I know Marty referenced it in his his sharing tonight as well, that we may have employees who aren't comfortable coming back to work. So we will bring that, the results hopefully forward so that you can get a clearer sense of where people are lining up. Obviously, as John Omega spoke earlier, we are looking at different scenarios. And some of them may be fluid even during the school year with an in-person model with students. And depending upon where we're at, how large of a class can we offer to make sure we afford the social distancing and so forth? And then the blended model and hybrid and virtual model. So looking at all of those. In addition to that, just as an FYI planning forward, I know that I will be in conversation again this week with Mr. Merly and Vicky together. We're meeting to talk about going forward. So we're not going down a pathway that he cannot support. Obviously, there's, there's only certain things that you have limitations with the CDC guidelines and so forth. But wanting to make sure that we have what's in the best interest of children and families and staff, so forth. The other piece that I know that we've talked about and we haven't gotten that far yet is the survey to our secondary students. Still would like to do that. And as I was thinking about that, I was thinking, well, what if I was a parent and my child and I don't agree? I'm not sure how that will play out, but I bet that will happen some in some places as well. And I think that still having those ongoing conversations. But we'll bring those surveys back and continue. And this will help, I'm sure, inform some of the opportunities that we will need to create and also in Mr. Merly and and the team. And obviously, find out what people are standing right now today. So we'll bring that next time.
Okay, other agenda requests? Rhonda?
Thanks, Andrew. So John had mentioned earlier in the meeting that we are, we have race and culture really at the forefront of our conversations right now. And I think we're all very aware of that. I'm requesting, hoping for a conversation with the board, the district, the incoming superintendent, that we could have a conversation/review to ensure that our our board policies and our district practices are not causing or maintaining racial disparities. I think it's an important conversation that we have right now. I don't know if that looks like an equity audit. I'm not sure if that's just something we would do district-wide, but I would love to see our district meet on these checks and balances. So I'm just putting it out there.
Okay, so that's an agenda, agenda item request for this topic. So we will, Eric, what do you think?
Yeah, I think Christina and I can bring this to our meeting with Michelle on Wednesday and maybe brainstorm a couple of ideas on what this looks like. You know, whether or not we, you know, our incoming superintendent starts in two meetings. So we'll just, we'll talk about what the best timeline is. And Rhonda, obviously, it's pressing, so we'll want to, I like that idea. Thank you for the suggestion and we'll figure out where it fits.
And I think, can I just add? I think it's important that we have this sooner than later because I think our our community is looking, especially when we're having a new superintendent coming in right now. And it's, it's really something that I think people want to know what we're committed to as a district and as a board. Thank you.
All right, anything else under setting future agendas? All right, that concludes the organizational support work session. And we'll, I give it back to Eric here.
Andrew, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
Allomed. Second.
Beth, take us home.
Nuited.
Thank you, Shelton.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi.
Warren.
Hi.
Jenden Huvell.
Hi.
Nakal.
Hi.
McCoy.
Hi.
Becker.
All right.
All right, pass 7-0, and that concludes our work session meeting. Thanks, everybody.
Everybody.
Bye.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.